I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the Board of Education for the School District of Waukesha. It's Wednesday, October 11th, 2017. Before we get started, I just wanted to, on the behalf of the Board of Education, just let people know that our hearts and prayers are with them to the families that have lost loved ones over the last several weeks during these tragic scenarios. So we'll keep them in our hearts and in our prayers. And let's please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sue, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Barbara Brusink.
Here.
Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Patricia Madden.
Here.
Patrick McCaffery.
Here.
Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinichak.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here. And Sue, have we been properly posted with the media?
Yes, we have.
Okay, thank you. We do have, we do not have bright lights for this evening, but hopefully we'll have one scheduled for next month. Do we know that yet now or?
I, we're, we're in the planning stage. We don't have any, I'm sure we will.
Okay, hopefully someone will come forward because that's one of the best parts of the meeting.
Well, it's still early enough in the year where I think people are trying to put together their, their programs, so.
Sure, sure. But I'm just having a call for bright lights participants. Okay, moving on to recognitions, Chris Hedstrom does have a recognition tonight, our Employee of the Month. Chris?
I do, thank you. The Employee Recognition Award for October is being presented this evening to Fred Fuller. Fred, would you join me, please? Fred has been working as a custodian with the School District of Waukesha since 1976. That's before I graduated from high school.
Oh.
I can't say that very often, you guys. He is currently the head custodian at Lowell Elementary School. And Fred's nominators begin by saying that Fred is one of the best custodians in the district. He is a beacon of humor, support, and innovation at Lowell. Fred knows each student by name. He develops positive relationships with them and has excelled in making connections with some of our learners who need a male role model the most. Fred is always thinking outside of the box to support our building and the staff and students. Most recently, Fred supported the renovation of the Lowell Elementary School library. And how, how many of you have been there? It's a nice library, very nice space. Fred put in extra time to ensure that the library project was done right. He offered suggestions, researched ways to do different things. He made sure that we were up and running in time for school. And I know that Rachel Herman was really nervous about that, and he's like, "I got it, I got it." Fred works outside of the school on different projects that support Lowell as well. He has produced custom-made furniture and a variety of teaching tools to help staff and serve, to help the staff serve learners. He keeps the building clean and safe. Fred does not complain. Rather, he goes above and beyond each day to serve the needs of our school. He truly makes Lowell a better place each day. And as a result of Fred's leadership skills, Lowell's students have what they need to be safe. He has built bulletin boards, painted offices and classrooms to promote a positive environment. He's fixed playground equipment in a timely manner and helps students feel a sense of belonging. Fred sees the good in each child, and as a result, they can see the good in themselves. On behalf of the School District of Waukesha, I would like to congratulate Fred Fuller on being selected to receive the Waukesha School District Employee Recognition Award.
Got to say "thank you." Thank you for your hard work. We are moving on to the time where we listen to our citizens address the Board of Education. As has been past practice, we actually, I'm sorry, I skipped over an item. We have student reps first. I could have been fined a few bucks for going out of order, huh? Let me, let me start over. We do have representatives from West High School tonight that will be presenting their report on their high school. Peter and Aisha? Sorry about that, almost skipped by you guys.
That's all right.
Go ahead, take it away.
All right, so I'm Peter McCudden. I'm involved with the football team at Waukesha West and also the track team, and then I'm also involved in FBLA and DECA, and newly the Wolverine Leadership Academy. It's a new thing we did this year, and we're really excited about it.
I'm Aisha. I am part of the Wolverine Leadership Academy with Pierre, also on the board for Model United Nations and Friends.
A little bit more about the Wolverine Leadership Academy. She is the president, so she kind of skipped over that. She's being a little modest, modest about that. But it's something new we put in this year, and you know, it's something that we really want to help empower the students and allow them to be able to have a voice and have numbers in that. And it's, it's about 66 kids, and we have an executive board of 11 kids that help make the, the process of the discussions go smooth, and it's just been off to a great start so far.
Wolverine Leadership Academy, the students were chosen on a basis of student recommendation, so your peers would recommend you, and teacher recommendation. So all the students that are part of the Wolverine Leadership Academy equally represent the school and its type.
Recently, we just had homecoming. We're really happy about the event and how it went. We had a lot of involvement from all grades, and I think it was probably one of the best homecomings in the past six years or so. Just from a lot of the senior leadership, we had a great show from them, and they were there the whole time, being respectful, and I thought it was one of the best dances we've had so far.
For student council, this is one of our bigger homecomings due to expenses and how many props we got, but I really like how much effort the senior class has put in to make this a good opportunity.
The Superfan, Superfan Council is something that we just started last year. It's something that spun off of a leadership council thing, and we're really happy about it because we've been starting to get a lot of positive feedback from opposing schools after football games about how respectful we are during the games, and I think it's making a really positive impact throughout the course of a game. With that comes football. Football's doing well right now. We just shared the conference title last week with a win over Muskego, and now we're playing for the outright conference championship against CMH. Boys Soccer last night just won the conference championship against Oconomowoc, so they're off to a great start. Hopefully, you're going to do well in playoffs. And then girls volleyball is also having a winning record this year. They have been competitive all year, and they just keep winning and winning, so hopefully they can go far in the playoffs. And then also cross country is having another great year. Coach Ramsey's doing a great job with those girls, and they seem, they're, they're going to look to have their fourth conference, or no, their fourth tri-state this year, so good luck to them.
The Cadets of Waukesha West, our marching band, has been doing fabulous as usual. Their theme this year is fire, so they're actually setting fire to the fuels they're on. They're heading to state this weekend, and good luck to all of them.
One thing that we wanted to touch upon tonight was the new, like the teacher involvement throughout the school and how we see that getting more family-friendly. And we see that the, before classes, we see teachers more involved in talking to kids in the hallway, and we've seen that it's caused a greater relationship and it's a more welcoming atmosphere going into class. So that's something we would like to celebrate tonight, just how great the teachers are and how happy we are to see them before, before we have an hour of class.
I'm actually student aide for one of the freshman biology classes, and I've noticed a change in how biology as an avid class is being taught. Before, we were kind of taught the concepts and we were ready for tests, but this year the kids are more prepared to apply biological concepts to real-world applications, and I feel like that's really important because high school doesn't prepare you to take tests. It actually prepares you to be part of the real world.
Advisory is something that we are new to the district, and I think it's really starting to take off because we're starting to differentiate the goals based on what grade you're in. And I think that's really important because freshmen are obviously not going to be doing the same thing as seniors need to be doing. So I think junior year with all, with them starting to figure out what they want to do with the career cruising and being able to see those options is really cool. And then also for all the seniors that don't know what they're doing yet, they can kind of figure out all the application process for college if that's what they would like to do, and I think that's really helpful in terms of the students that aren't really on top of the ball yet.
Model United Nations is kind of a tiny club here at West, but we have grown it to about a club of 40 students, which is large for an academic club. And this year, instead of going to one conference at UW-Milwaukee, we're actually going to a conference at Carthage College and U Chicago. So overall, we are really building a large political group at our school.
That's all we have today, and if there's any questions.
Mr. Baumgart.
I don't think it's questions as much as a comment or two for you. You're sharing with us some interesting information, the fact that there is more to school than the math and English and stuff like that. Your, your leadership program, your United Nations program, those things are very important, and they're kind of beyond the grading level, you know. And then I want to add to that, and the board members have seen this, we received a copy of the email that one of the parents sent out about the very positive behavior of the, the students at the Arrowhead game when one of their, one of the Arrowhead students was injured and the way you behave, you and the team behaved.
And that was an Arrowhead parent, I think, that sent the letter.
Yes, it was from an Arrowhead parent, yes. That's what I meant. And you may not believe it, but that really got to us, at least it did to me. You know, it tells us so much more about what our kids are about here in Waukesha, and I want to congratulate the whole school for that.
Thank you. You know, it was something, it was a nice little thing to be able to see and just see some positive feedback from them, just knowing that we're doing it right and people are noticing, so it's really nice.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien.
So I was impressed with your presentation today and your involvement in a lot of different things as students. Both of you, where do you plan to go on? I mean, you're both seniors, correct?
Yes.
So what do you plan for future, what's your, what's your post-college career expected to be?
I would like to go to medical school, so most classes and activities I've done at school, academics.
For me, I'm planning on playing football on the next level for college, so kind of seeing where that's going to take me. But I'd like to study accounting and business and just, I really like accounting so far, so we'll see what I can do with that, and mainly football and try to move on with that.
So the other, the other question I have is, you know, whether, what other leadership activities are the two of you involved in beyond what we see today? Peter, I think you're team captain.
Yeah, I was, I was team captain last year for football as well, and then football captain this year, and then I'm a track captain as well for the track and field team, so.
And I'm president of the Wolverine Leadership Academy, vice president for Model United Nations and.
Very impressive, your involvement, both of you.
Other questions or comments? Just a, just a real quick one. You've seen a freshman class come in and you see the sophomores, you know, and the underclassmen is, is the focus here. What kinds of things is the leadership council doing with the younger students? You had mentioned, obviously, their focus is different. Can you give us some examples of that?
Some of the stuff that we've started to do is, you know, our legacy at West as seniors is starting to pass on the torch and, you know, setting things up for them to be able to be successful and what do they, what have we seen through our four years that's going to help them be more successful, whether it be outside of the classroom or inside the classroom, being happy when you walk in the doors, and you know, just making a great atmosphere. I know that's one of the things we do is just, what can we improve around, around the school? So, I mean, there's a bunch of little different things, and like we, like we said, we just started this year, so we're really excited to start to get some of those ideas off, like off and running, so we'll see what happens with that.
The Leadership Academy is actually working towards getting kids more involved in activities because as a freshman and sophomore, it's sometimes hard to find activities that you fit into or like are interested in, so we're finding a way to broadcast more clubs to the younger kids.
Those, those are a couple really, really good examples, and actually succession planning is a quite advanced leadership skill to have, to even be aware that you guys are moving on and someday you need to be replaced, so how do you essentially grease the skids for others and, and get them ready to take over those positions? That's really, really good.
Thank you.
Mrs. Reinichak.
Thank you. I couldn't let you go without saying how proud I am of you, Peter. I've known you for a long time, and I see you in the paper. If you guys haven't seen Peter in the paper a lot with football, he's always running or catching or getting tackled, so great job and wish you all the success. And Aisha, it's so nice to meet you. You guys are wonderful examples of leadership at West, so keep up the great work.
Thank you for your report. We'll see you in a couple months and two, three months, I guess, so.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Okay, now we'll have a chance to hear from our citizens. I didn't mean to skip over that wonderful report earlier. As has been past practice, each individual will be limited to three minutes of time to speak. At the two-and-a-half-minute mark, Barb will, will give you a sign to wrap things up and you'll have another 30 seconds. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, to refrain from using any appropriate language in any manner, and to be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be asked not to speak at future board meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker and of the Board of Education refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that may detract from the meeting. And also, in order to respect our, our speakers, let's turn off our cell phones or silence them if we haven't done so already. Do we have anyone signed up for this evening? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address us? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to our minute approval. We do have three minutes for consideration. September 13th, we have a regular board minutes. September 13th, we have an executive session minutes. And then also on September 13th, we had a public hearing on our budget. Is there a motion for approving the minutes?
So moved.
So moved by Barb.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Any discussion, corrections? Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Barbara Brusink. Aye. William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffery.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
And Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes nine zero, Sue. Moving on to our communications report, Dr. Gray, do we have?
No correspondence this evening.
Okay. Mrs. Brusink, do you happen to have a Waukesha Education Foundation update?
I do, I do. Thank you for including it.
Absolutely.
Okay. The Waukesha Education Foundation would like to thank to everyone who participated in the 11th Annual Waukesha Education Foundation Golf Outing a few weeks ago at Western Lakes Golf Course. Thank you to the golfers, sponsors, and volunteers who made it a huge success. A special thanks to Mayor Sean Riley for serving as the guest auctioneer during the live auction part of the dinner program. The change in venue and time of the outing were positive. During the dinner program at the golf outing, it was announced that WEF has received a donation from the Improcor Corporation of Muskego of $7,500 a year for five years. This, their generous contribution of $37,500 is the first major gift the foundation has received, and our goal to raise $2 million by two, 2020. Please mark your calendars for the Waukesha Education Foundation Celebration of Excellence in the School District of Waukesha to be held on Sunday, February 18th, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Waukesha South High School. The purpose of the Celebration of Excellence is to showcase the 2018 federal foundation grant recipients, to offer parents and community members a fun way to explore the excellent academic, fine arts, sports, and co-curricular programs available in the School District of Waukesha, and to celebrate local business and community partnerships, and finally to present our three annual Waukesha Education Foundation Awards. So that completes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Brusink. The Celebration of Excellence is a great event. I hope everyone can attend. Yes, Bill?
Even though we didn't come home with any trophies or prizes, we had a good time, those of us that were there, and I would encourage board members.
At the golf outing?
At the golf outing. I would encourage board members, if you can't come to play golf, you can always come to eat dinner, and the dinner was very good this year, by the way. And I think we should, I see one of the foundation members that was very active in putting that together, Diane back there, we should recognize the wonderful work that team did in putting together.
Diane, I'm sorry.
Putting together that event, so thank you, Diane, and all your team.
Hopefully, you've been called worse before, so I'm sorry about that. We've known each other how many years? Thank you, Mrs. Brusink. Moving on to our charter, school, and program report given by Mr. Baumgart.
Aren't you going to do the safety committee?
No. He's in a hurry to get out of here today.
You know what? It's been a, it's been a tough night for me, Bill. Amanda, would you like to give the safety committee report first?
Luckily, we have someone here who knows how to beat.
I would apologize, but that's okay.
Couldn't pass that up, Joe.
Yeah, I, I need to be corrected every once in a while, Bill. Thank you.
I wasn't ready either.
Go ahead, Amanda.
I am ready, thank you, yes. The safety committee met this morning at the service building, and eight items were discussed today. We had a review of the accident reports for the student and staff. Some old business was reviewed regarding the dog policy. The conversation extended to different programs that we have. Haws comes on the property and programming, programs that this, they do with our students, and then therapy versus service dogs, so there's some discussion there. Safe Schools was brought up again. Some information has been sent out to the appropriate people throughout the district, and we're waiting for feedback to come back on that. Suggestions have been shared with the executive cabinet, and we're also waiting for feedback on that. The next item was, we're continuing to work with the city regarding their new crossing guard company, just staying on top of things, being aware of what's going on. The next item was discussing, discussion regarding the city and state construction projects that are impacting the traffic around our different schools. The men over at the service building are staying on top of that one. The next item we discussed was, excuse me, I'll just replace, here we go. M3 Insurance presented their risk and safety assessment checklist that they'll be using for walkthroughs in addition to what is already in place, so it's just a follow-up to safety checklist. The next item we discussed was recommendations for notifying parents for safety drills. All the schools already have something, but we're just looking to see what's being out there, to see if we need to have something set across the board for all of the schools. And then briefly, we had discussion regarding communications used for, during safety, for safety across the district. So the different walkie-talkies into different pieces, what systems each school is using, and getting quotes and, and other things, just to make sure all of the equipment is up to par. And that completed our discussions. The next safety meeting will be held at the service building November 8th at 9:00 a.m. And with that, I conclude my report.
Thank you kindly. Mr. Baumgart, I guess now it's time to move on to your, your report.
Good. Thank you. Couple items to share with you tonight. I attended the Health Academy and the STEM Academy Governance Board meetings last, last week, and it was evident to me that the governance boards, for at least those two, have been going through a revitalization process, new members on the boards, some very interested people, and that's positive, and, and all of the seats are properly filled at this point. That's another good thing. Another item, I got a message from Butler that I thought I'd share with you. For the third year in a row, Butler has identified October as bystander revolution month of action. I'm not sure what that all stands for, but, but going on. Each day, the students are given a specific challenge to spread positivity, not sure that's a word even, but anyway, positivity throughout the building. Some examples, share your smile, spread positivity, rep your teacher, give thanks, sit with someone new, et cetera. Since this is the important piece here, since doing this, we have seen a decline in office referrals. Specifically, last year, they had a 73% decrease in bullying and harassment, and I thought that was really something to hear happening. And, you know, middle school can be kind of touchy that way. So, good one. Planetarium, another very positive event. On October 5th, there was a reception held to demonstrate the updated Horowitz Planetarium's presentation. It's, it's a new digital presentation. Simply said it was well-attended, and comments about the new presentations were extremely positive. And several, Karen was there, Barbara was there, several of you were there. Very good, and a good opportunity to network with some people coming in.
And what we can do with that equipment is unbelievably.
Oh, yeah, it's incredible.
Cackuler.
It's, it's more than a planetarium now because there are other things that can be done with it that's really cr, very curriculum-related to some other things like science, chemistry, anatomy, things like that. STEM continues to be at or near capacity at all grade levels. We have a few waitlists at the lower grades two through five, and at the upper levels we're either full or in the mid-90s in terms of seats filled. Saratoga has a new, is now operating with a brand-new, beautiful science lab over there. If you get a chance to stop by and see Jem and Company, look at that. Along with other schools this summer, Randall was honored with the GE team that comes out to help with the summer rehab, and Melissa Horn gave us a presentation of what they've done over at Randall, and it was just incredible. And E-Achieve, Rick sent, Rick sent me some information, very good start to the year for E-Achieve. Some of the highlights, full-time enrollment is right where it was last year on the third Friday. Part-time enrollment is down a bit, about, I'm not sure I got the numbers right, anyway, 42 points, I'm not sure what that means. We had the best work quality score on the Week Four progress report that we've had in six years. A 55% point drop in students, number of students who had not started a class yet by the end of Week Four. That, that's a good thing if we have a drop in the number that aren't starting. And they had their highest weekly web conferences with teachers attendance in three years when we started, since we started keeping track. So, a couple, couple things going on out there, and for the most part, very positive. Maybe they just don't tell me about the negatives, I'm not sure. I do go looking.
And lab also.
Pardon?
Lab opened up officially.
Yeah. Oh, the, yeah, we, that was since our last meeting, the, at Hawthorne, the new lab program, yes. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Moving on to our consent agenda. There are various items in your packet for consideration. There were no expulsions, so we do not have to consider that. However, if there's any item that a board member would like to have set aside, Darren, did we have any, any gifts? We did have some gifts, didn't we?
Yeah, three gifts, or gifts to three of our schools, four gifts total. Les Paul Middle School received two gifts this month. The first was $2,000 from Northwestern Mutual, which matched a gift from Paul and Kathleen Oman. The second gift was a camera lens, multiple gift cards with a value of $925 from Paul Oman to be used for all student activities, yearbook, and photography club, and student rewards. Rose Glenn received a five, a gift of $500 from Clarence Stoll to be used to purchase teacher, school, school supplies per donor request. And then West High School received a generous donation of $10,000 from the Eaton Corporation. This money will be used for programming, programming and supplies for the West Trek program.
Those are nice gifts. Thank you to those who gave those. Now I'll ask if there's anything that any member would have set aside for separate consideration. Okay, seeing none. Pat Mann, will you please present the consent agenda?
Earlier this evening, the Human Resources Committee approved of two resignations, three leaves of absence, and four new or modified teacher contracts. The information was provided in your packet, and an addendum was placed on your desk. Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda approved as amended.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Baumgart. Further discussion? Sue, will you please take the roll call vote?
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinichak.
Aye.
Barbara Brusink.
Aye.
Patrick McCaffery.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
And Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes 9-0, Sue.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Madden. Moving on to the superintendent's report given by Dr. Gray.
Thank you. I'm gonna refer back to Bill. He talked about the planetarium, and the event was a very wonderful event. About six years ago, the FNF Committee had a meeting there, and we got to see a little bit of how the old equipment worked. This new equipment is not even in the same environment or the same atmosphere as this new. So, I'm gonna recommend either, you know, the opportunity to either do a TNL Committee meeting out there, or potentially, as we continue to have some of our board workshops on capital projects and so on, they have a number of meeting rooms, but, you know, either before or after, we could get a short demonstration. And especially FNF for having the foresight to, you know, forward the funds to get that project done. It was well worth it, and as you see, if you go and see the program, you'll realize that that was a good move and a helpful move on part of the FNF Committee. Another point, Bill talked about the letter from the Arrowhead parent regarding the football program. Almost every year, I shouldn't say almost, literally every year, I do get a letter from a parent from an opposing team, whether they've won or they've lost, talking about the great sportsmanship from, on the part of our teams. And it happens most often in football, but we've had a number of those letters. And again, you know, I point out that those aren't the kind of things that get represented on a, on a state report card, or they're not part of an ACT score, they're not part of the very small area that our state, you know, grades us on, but these are things that will last these kids a lifetime. And I think the football game at West, if we were to ask Peter how it felt, he would have, he would have said it's, you know, it was, that's something he'll remember forever. Enrollments, this year, as of today, we are educating 12,837 students. That number may change by tomorrow, because they're still doing a little bit of a wrap-up on our 3rd Friday enrollment count, but that is our number, that is down, we're down a little bit more than we anticipated, but we do know that when we looked at enrollment projections the last couple of years, we were expecting to lose in the range of 100 to 125 students. But again, with, with the voucher program being expanded, and the private charter program that are in the state, we are losing some students to those two programs. Not many, but, you know, that 30 or 40 in one program, 34 to the other way, that puts us, you know, in the 200 range in enrollment reductions. But again, we are, that number may go up in the next few days as we continue to reconcile where these kids are. Our open enrollment in numbers for E-Achieve and other programs are up a bit, not as much as we'd like, but that's something we are working on in terms of the marketing program. And we had that report recently in the FNF Committee, and it was recommended we look at different ways to market that program, because we think there is room for a couple hundred more students, at least, in that particular program. So, the only thing that was concerning to me is that when I look at the enrollment by grades, the enrollment numbers go up corresponding with the grades. That means that, for example, we have 1,280 12th graders, but only 853 kindergartners. That tells me, at some point, you know, we might be getting some of these kids back from the privates and the charters at some point, but that indicate, that trend indicates that we're gonna see some declining enrollments over the next few years. Now, that's not always the case, things, things change, and like I said, often, when kids are done with 5th grade, if they're a private school, they will come back to the public schools, and you can see that in here, there's, there's some big jumps at certain grades that would indicate that we are getting some kids back from other programs. So, we'll keep watching that, and we'll have to keep working on that particular piece. And again, it's important that we do market the school district. You know, one of the things that I think vouchers and charters have brought to us is a sense of competitiveness, a sense of marketing, and making sure that we have really quality programs, so that we can, we can compete and exceed expectations of students who might be going to other types of schools. And finally, the last reminder that we have Monday, October 23rd, and I think Mr. O'Brien will probably remind us of that too, but 6:00 PM, we'll have our final budget approval meeting. Again, it's late, because we don't get numbers from DPI until the last second in October. If everyone in the state spent their budget down to the penny, in other words, spent every dollar, we wouldn't have this issue, but the problem is, some districts overspend, some underspend, and so they have to rerun the revenue estimates or the revenue aid calculations once our audits are finally in. So, as a result, we don't know what that number is until the end of October, and of course, by November 7th, every year, we have to certify the levy. So, that necessitates an extra short, hopefully, short board meeting on October 23rd.
Mr. Brian?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I think I sent him, I hope I sent an email to you, Mr. Gray, about a, I won't mention the person's name, but Kettle Moraine has a student that, I think he's a National Merit Scholar or something like that, he's one of the top students, and he started out at higher, and so not only do our scorecards not reflect, you know, we actually contribute to Kettle Moraine with some of our best talent. But I'd like to share a story.
It's not only Kettle Moraine, but.
I'd like to share a story a little bit. I knew his family, and when they left the district, they were very concerned about where they were going to put their place or child. And the district at the time, Student Services at the time, worked with them to find an appropriate place for their children, based on their experiences in Waukesha, and they found a location, Kettle Moraine. So, I think it's a, it's a credit to the school district that not only do we serve our children well when we're here, when they're here, we serve their families as they leave, and the success, successful outcome should be noted.
Right.
I just wanted to circle back to the planetarium once again. Had a chance to talk to Dave at the event, and he has several volunteers that work for him, and some of the volunteers have been volunteering for like decades, they really have been behind the program, and the passion that these people have for their program is just off the charts, and they work very hard, and we'd like to also thank the organizations that donated to also make this a reality, and the individuals, there are a number of individuals that gave donations, but the public, this is open to the public too, so we highly encourage the public to come and visit the planetarium. There's wonderful shows just open to us all. You don't have to be in an elementary school in our district, so.
Right.
Mrs. Reinacek?
Thank you. How are they going to advertise those shows and when they're showing? Do they know yet?
I don't think they have a plan, but I know they're working on it. We also want to look at maybe some enrichment programs in the summer, and doing some other types of events in the summer to make full use of that all year round, because it's such a wonderful asset, it would be shame to have it hardly used in the summer when school's out of session, so.
So it's not that they have a website where people can go to now and find out what's playing?
Let's advertise on our website.
Yeah.
The general one.
For the public.
I believe so.
Okay.
I believe the whole schedule's up there. And they have been improving in attendance over the years, compared to where they used to be for the public, for the public side of things, and they also sponsor, or they'll also have like groups like Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts, and those kinds of organizations participate, so, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Gray, appreciate that. Moving on to our committee reports, we're gonna start with our Teaching and Learning Committee, given by Chairperson Barbara Brzingk.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Como. The last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting was held on October 3rd, 2017, at 6:00 PM. There's one action item, two information items, and one discussion item that appears on the agenda for teaching and learning this evening. The action item first, we're looking for approval of the computer science courses. The school district of Waukesha is expanding options for students who are interested in computer science, and those who want to pursue a computer, computer science field. This request is for approval of the next set of computer science courses in the sequence of offerings following last December approvals. On a vote of 5-0, the Teaching and Learning Committee approved the courses AP Development Shop and AP Computer Science. We request board approval, and I so move.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Reinacek. Discussion? Mr. Brian?
I just had a few questions, I mean, for whether, whether the administration can help me or not, I wasn't able to watch the TNL learning, but how much does this curriculum, do we use organizations like Code.org for developing curriculum, or the programs relative to this?
Coming, yes.
Well, I mean, Code.org supplies a lot of curriculum, and I just, yeah.
And they did not mention it at the meeting. I know that I'm gonna be talking to Brian Ureling about.
Turn on your mic.
It's on. I'm gonna be talking to Brian Ureling about that, because he called me and asked me about some of that stuff, but we don't use Code.org. It's a great resource though, because I know a lot of businesses use it.
I mean, it's the leading curriculum driver for.
Right.
And it's financed by everybody, and there's a wealth of.
Yep, it's a fantastic, and they didn't bring it up, but that doesn't mean they're not looking at it, it's just that they didn't bring it up in the, in the presentation. I'm sure that Brian and Dan are well aware of that resource.
Okay.
And Steve Schuman, I'm sure. But I am gonna bring it up to him, because I am gonna have a discussion with him, he called me after the meeting.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on the curriculum that was presented? I was glad to see that we're looking at both app development and responsive websites. I know you guys covered a little bit, Pat, you were asking about responsive websites, which basically are mobile-friendly and friendly on tablets. So, I'm glad that we're, you know, we're giving exposure to our students in both those areas. Those are, those are the hot areas, if you wish, for our students to be learning about at this time. It'll be interesting to see how that plays out over time, whether websites or apps win out, or if they both, because there's hybrids of them, and actually, a lot of times, the GUI interface are done in app development, but if there's real processing that has to go on, that's still done on web servers. So, it'll be interesting to see how this develops out, but it might be good to, you know, have a report next year, you know, if it gets approved, as to how this is, how this is moving along. So, Mr. Brian?
Yeah, I was trying to think where I heard this, but it was on 60 Minutes, the person that ran the digital campaign for the Trump presidential run, he self-taught himself coding before he started working for now-President Trump, but at the time, he was Donald Trump, the businessman. And so, the idea of coding and introducing that to our children at a younger age, so they can start to develop those skills, is what Code.org is all about, and it should be driving our curriculum planning going forward, you know, using that type. I mean, there's a lot of research that goes into that.
I can, I can tell you, they have coding clubs in the elementary schools right now for, for the younger students, so it's, yeah, it's definitely something that you can pick up at an early age, and you can teach yourself, I know a lot of graphic artists that actually taught themselves, because a lot of graphics schools do not teach code for web, they just teach graphics, and then you have to pick that up outside of school.
What I also like to see, or that I see is in the proposed curriculum, is a lot of times, people think coding is this kind of nerdy thing, you go in a back room and have your heads down, and you don't talk to people, you just kind of go, and that's it. And it's not like that at all. You actually have to learn how to listen, you have to understand businesses and problem analysis and math, and there's a whole bunch that goes into it. And then there's the personal side, the people skills thing. When you're interviewing someone, you're trying to figure out how to automate something, and I'm talking to Todd, I need to be able to interact with him and ask the appropriate questions to flesh out that information, and I see that the way we've set this up gives our students exposure to that, that, all those other soft skills too. So I think that that's, that's excellent, that's excellent. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Sue, will you please take the roll call vote on approving the computer science courses as presented?
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brzingk?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes 9-0, Sue. Bart?
Okay. First information item, AP Dual Language Seminar Course Proposal. The AP Dual Language Seminar is a course proposed to accelerate and extend the Spanish literacy courses offered at the high school level in grades 9 and 10, specifically AP Spanish Language and Culture and AP Spanish Literature. This will ensure a college preparatory pathway to students who master Spanish but who are currently under-enrolled in AP-level courses in Waukesha. It is proposed for the 11th grade step in Spanish literacy to ensure access to students with advanced Spanish to a third year of instruction at the high school level. We will see a request for approval of this course next month. We have a technology update, Meadowbrook Elementary School. During the 2016-2017 school year, all Meadowbrook staff members completed the SMAR model training. SAMR stands for Substitution, Augmentation, Modification, and Redefinition, and is a model used to help teachers infuse technology into teaching and learning. Moving forward, teachers continue to develop their focus of infusing technology into regular classroom instruction to support increased learning opportunities. Member of the Meadowbrook Vanguard Team showcased how technology has increased student engagement across different grade levels and content areas. And lastly, we have a student achievement update relating to Hillcrest Elementary School. Hillcrest's first cycle of the sale process found them celebrating the growth of students and growth in teacher practice. After a series of critical, honest conversations throughout the spring and sale summer days, the Hillcrest team emerged with a refined theory of action that rests on quality collaborative conversation that advocates and serves all students. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the Teaching and Learning Committee report.
And this last, this last item is scheduled for discussion, if anybody would like to toss in any comments or, on it? Okay, all right. Thank you, Bart. I know you guys aren't shy, but I thought I'd invite you anyways. Okay, moving on to our next committee, which is our Human Resources and Compensation Committee, given by Pat Madden.
We did all of our business with the consent agenda, Mr. President.
Thank you. Moving on to policy, Chairperson William. Bill Baumgart?
Yes. Tonight, we have three action items and three discussion items to present. The action items, we were given the first reading at our September board meeting. The first one is revisions to Policy 3440, job-related expenses for professional staff, and 4440, job-related expenses for support staff. These policies were quite simply updated to include the Internal Revenue Service's rate per mile for mileage expenses, the timing at which you must submit your reimbursement, your information for reimbursement, and proof of the validity of those payments. I move for approval of these policy revisions as presented.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Brien. Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brzingk?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Greg Dietz?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
And Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes 9-0, Sue. Bill?
Thank you. The second action item deals with Policy 5136, a revision to personal communication devices, and a new policy, 5136.02, cellular phones in the classroom. Quite simply, the personal communications devices policy has now been split so that references to cellphones have been removed from the personal communication devices and placed in a new policy for cellphones alone, so for the most part, it's the same, we just split them into two separate policies, so we could have the specifics about cellphones not being in classrooms. And I therefore move for approval of the policy revision and the new policy as presented.
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Brien. Discussion?
Can I just, may I?
They can be on the students, on their person, just not...
Yeah. Not out.
Yeah, and say, in a locker room, they're not supposed to be in a locker room at all.
Correct.
That, I mean, some districts allow them in a backpack and stuff, that just leads to too many problems as we've had recently. So, they are not allowed at all in locker rooms. Now, if it isn't a backpack and no one sees it, I don't know how we would control that, but bottom line is, they shouldn't be in there.
But during the learning time in the classrooms, it's not being used.
Yeah, I mean, even if they're, yeah, they should not be functional at all, either listening to music or pocket texting or whatever else, no, they should not be used, so. And kids are very good at that, so.
Yes.
Want to make clarification, thank you.
That is a talent that exists, that we wish wasn't quite as good as what they are. Any other discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Greg Deetz?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes 9-0, Sue? Bill?
And the third policy for approval this evening is 8531, Free and Reduced-Priced Meals is the title. Quite simply, we added a phrase in here to identify, to identify the schools where breakfast is provided. In other words, let me read this over again. The board shall provide eligible children for breakfast. And previously, the next phrase was missing, "at schools where breakfast is provided." In other words, we're not providing it at anybody's schools unless it is provided by plan. And I move for approval of this policy revision for Policy 8531.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Brien, discussion? All right, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Greg Deetz?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes 9-0, Sue? Bill?
Yes.
Discussion items?
I have some discussion items, some policies which we will be, I am in essence giving you the first reading on, we would be bringing these back hopefully for approval in a month, and we will be discussing them further at our October 17th policy meeting. So, if you have any issues with what's in these, you may visit with us on the 17th. But the first one is revision to Policy 3112, Board to Staff Communications for Professional Staff, and 4112, Board and Staff Communications for Support Staff. This was presented to you once before, we had some concerns raised with us, and we have added a different sentence to the policy that reads, "Further, all employees who engage board members with the intention of making disparaging, defamatory, and/or false or intentionally inaccurate statements targeted at their direct supervisor, administrator, or another employee will be subject to disciplinary actions. All employee concerns should follow the procedures as outlined in the employee handbook." And that is the change for 31, not change, the addition to 3112 and 4112.
Mr. O'Brien?
Not that I'm objecting to this, but there's, I'm kind of objecting to how it's laid out. In terms of that last sentence that's in there?
Yes.
Shouldn't that be the preamble? Because that is the primary directive, that they follow the employee handbook? I mean, I would, I'd kind of invert the wording, you guys can study the committee, but that would be my suggestion.
I didn't follow what you're saying, are you taking this whole sentence and putting it at the beginning of number three?
Well, sort of, I would say, you know, I'd make it very clear that, you know, the primary is that you're to follow the employee handbook, and in addition, this is not allowed.
Oh, okay, the handbook particularly, yeah.
Yeah, because you kind of throw it on at the end, but really, that is the proper way, as per the employee handbook, and then you're making the additional clarity that, you know, they're not engaged in these matters.
I understand.
So, that's the way I would do it, but you guys can decide for yourselves.
We'll look at that at our meeting, think of Kurt.
Other discussion on this policy change?
Okay.
Think of something, you can call Bill up in the meantime?
Get to us, yes. The next one is policy, and again, this is all first readings for our next month. Revision of Policy 6510, Payroll Authorizations. This was a modification of the policy to eliminate a part because now all payroll authorizations are the same. All employees are paid in 24, with 24 pay periods, there's no options to go for all summer, all winter, all Sundays, all holidays, whatever, it's one for all. And that's the way we're doing it, so it's really just catching the words up with what we're doing. Policy 9700 was raised at a previous board meeting relative to all of the brochures and stuff that come into the office, and the amount of time and energy that is spent, whether we should be disseminating those or not disseminating and proofing them, et cetera, et cetera. And this policy has now been put together to include the top of, second page, paragraph about, you know, the way we're going to manage that so that we aren't passing everything out to everybody. And then there is a second, a second change in the back page, under Sale of School Supplies, there is an additional bullet, "No employer or employee-owned company may sell goods or services or promote the sale of goods or services to students on any school site per state law." And again, that would be coming forward at our policy meeting next Tuesday and for approval in November. Any other questions on that? None, I have just one other little thing that just fits into what we're going to be doing as we go forward. We are getting, again, another packet from Neola of a number of policies that are for us to look at as to whether we want to adapt them, adopt them or adopt or adapt them. And we're going to be looking at, hopefully, a little way to make it smoother, there is a number of policies that we get, we have absolutely no way to change those policies. It's something that comes to us with the government, you know, this is the way it'll be. Listen up. So, if there's a way that we can, you know, you'll still get them, they're not going to eliminate you from getting them, but we might want to combine those into one packet somehow. We're talking about that at our committee meeting, so. With that, I have concluded the policy report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Baumgart. Moving on to Technology Committee, given by Mr. McCaffrey.
I have no report this evening, Mr. President, however, our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, October 17th at 5:00 PM.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Finance and Facilities, given by Chairperson O'Brien.
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. McCaffrey for standing as the chair of the meeting on Monday, I was unable to attend.
My pleasure.
I understand he did an excellent job, but he had trouble controlling one very wordy board member, I guess.
Who might that be?
Always a struggle, you know that.
Who might that be?
I have no idea. Action items, there were no action items, there were some, three information items, update on the 2017-18 budget and tax levy, the committee was updated on the 2017-18 budget and tax levy. The administration provided three property tax scenarios. On October 15th, the DPI will certify the district's equalization aid and voucher participation levels, which will enable the business office to calculate the final tax levy and rate. At this time, a drop in the tax rate is being projected, always a good thing. Site Improvement Funding, the administration shared a document that is sent out to principals to allow them to apply for small renovations slash projects to be completed at their sites based on a set of criteria. Beginning with the 2016-17 school year, a pool of funds, $250,000, was created for this purpose. This fund helps to provide a clear divide between maintenance and curriculum-related work, and provides a framework for principal slash slight input into maintenance work being done in the district, and improves transparency to the decision-making process. The third information item was our wonderful monthly budget report. The committee was presented the budget report for the month of September. $7,769,965 was reported in general fund revenue, and $10,572,872 was expended during the month. We spent more than we took in that month. There is no revenue reported in the Special Education Fund, and $2,91,469 was expended. The district is operating in accordance with our budget projection and other areas. There were no discussion items, and, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Wow, man, that's a record.
That was quick. Maybe it was because of the chairperson for...
Probably was.
Touche. Okay, that ends our committee reports. We do, we are looking for any recommendations for future board meeting agendized items or agendized items for committee chairs to consider? Are there any ideas that we would like to put on any of the agendas? Okay, seeing none. We do have a need to go into executive session. I would be looking for a motion on Item C. Mr. O'Brien?
Mr. Board President, I move to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Prence 1, Prence E, for purpose of consideration of offers regarding district property. I so move.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, Sue, will you take the roll call vote on that?
William Baumgart?
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien?
Aye.
Amanda Roddy?
Aye.
Karen Reinacek?
Aye.
Greg Deetz?
Aye.
Patrick McCaffrey?
Aye.
Patricia Madden?
Aye.
Barbara Brusink?
Aye.
And Joseph Como?
Aye. Passes 9-0. Just so everyone knows, there is a chance that we will reconvene into open session after our closed session. But if you choose to leave us at this time, have a good evening, otherwise, most likely we will be reconvening after, I don't know, maybe 15, 20 minutes would be my best guess, it's hard to say.